All right, ladies and gentlemen, we will call this meeting to order of the Delmar College Board of Regents at 1:00 PM on Tuesday, October 3rd. There seems to be excitement in the air. I don't know what it is. There's a lot of folks here.
It's the cold weather.
Is there? I'm not sure that there's ever going to be cold weather again in South Texas. Let me call a roll to establish a quorum. Mr. Krul, Mr. Kelly, Ms. Everett.
Here.
Dr. Adami.
Here.
Mr. Garza.
Here.
Mr. Loeb.
Here.
I'm Carol Scott. We have a quorum and can conduct business. Would you please join me in a moment of silence? Mr. Kelly, would you lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance?
Please join me in pledging allegiance to our flag and country.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Please join us in reading the Delmar College Vision Statement. Delmar College will be the premier choice for life-changing educational opportunities provided by responsive, innovative faculty and staff who empower students to improve local and global communities. Thank you all. Delmar College is streaming our live audio and video from the official Board of Regents meetings on the college's website in real time, with the exception of portions of the meeting as considered closed session by statute. We now have the opportunity for general public comment if there is someone here to make comment on items not on our agenda today. Now is your time. I don't see anyone who signed up for that. Thank you very much. We will move on to our recognitions. We have an opportunity to recognize a couple of our outstanding professors today, and I'm going to ask Dr. John DeHalkum to please begin that for us.
We are pleased today to recognize John J. Nelson, or we call him JJ. He's Assistant Professor of Geographic Information Systems in the Computer Science Engineering and Advanced Technology Department. JJ has served the college in many capacities since 2007. Some of the jobs he has held include multiple grant and part-time positions at our college prior to starting as a full-time instructor. His grant experience has led the department and the college in innovation in GIS and areas such as unmanned aircraft and artificial intelligence. He has worked with the Delmar College students with great enthusiasm as he prepares them for careers in GIS. His expertise in training our students for applications of GIS and UAV with agriculture has been tremendous, and I know firsthand several of our students have gone on to earn, one of them I know a PhD, and some others have gone on to get really great jobs. In addition to his teaching and his many grant initiatives, he finds a lot of time to contribute to the community. And I'm going to have Ms. Keys come forward to talk about JJ's longtime commitment to music.
Thank you, Dr. Halkum. And JJ, would you come on up? You can't miss JJ in the back.
I'm going along.
Come on, JJ. I'm sure many of you have seen the Channel 6 KRIS-TV Angels where the station recognizes a community leader for their contributions to what they've done to our community. And they recently recognized JJ Nelson as a community angel. And they must say that they even came on campus and did the filming, and it was quite impressive. I hope y'all got to see it on TV, on the news. And this is in recognition for his work with the community, and particularly with the Bay Jamming fundraising that he's done and the music that they've provided for the last 34 years down at Cole Park. I know it's something that I get to enjoy because everybody parks in front of my house as they go down, but it's really an amazing event down at Cole Park at the amphitheater on every Thursday night throughout the entire summer. And then on Friday nights, they have movie night. And this is a collaboration that's taken place for many, many years, and really under JJ's leadership. It really would not have taken place without him being dedicated and making this happen. It's a partnership between the City of Corpus Christi, their park and recreation department, many business donors who donate the funds, who pay for the musicians to come to town, put them up over the weekend, and all the expenses that go with that. And then there's the Bay Jamming, which is a nonprofit charitable organization that JJ's led, and it has a board of directors that serves the community as well. But this is just one of the things that JJ's done for the community, and it's really an impressive event. It's a family event, if you get the chance to go down, and it truly shows off our bay front and the community down. I think it's one of the most Corpus Christi enjoyable things you can do that truly shows off our community and that bay front and the park system, and then families out at night just listening to good music. So JJ, thank you. We wanted to take this chance to recognize you.
Thank you very much.
You want to say a few words?
Yeah, a few words from John Nelson. That in itself is a story. I guess I could just, I don't need to move, I need to think. Wonderful surprise when I was told this, as I was surprised a few weeks ago with the Channel 6 Angel. No one's ever called me an angel, which is a wonderful, I know many of you from many years ago, and this is exciting for me for many reasons, being an old club owner and music promoter for many, many years, which was the genesis originally of the Bay Jamming, and then we just kept it going as a nonprofit. It became such a community event with concerts in '89 throughout the summer, and then the movies we started in 2003. But you know what? I don't want to make this all about me in regards to this. It took everybody to make this happen, and as was mentioned, it was the City Parks and Recreation Department who gave us the facility and the staff and wonderful folks to work with. It was all the local businesses, all, you know, whether it was $250, $500, $1,000, whatever, they'd come up with what was necessary so we could do these shows. So, you know, you'd see all the banners all over the place, and it truly is local. And then Bay Jamming, Series Inc., a nonprofit, it was kind of the glue to hold this thing together, and we were able to promote all these artists locally, nationally, regionally, many different groups, plus then family-friendly movies. And our numbers have just gone up and up, and it's been really wonderful. And we invite people to join our Facebook page and our group. We have 4,000, I believe, members, and we have about 17,000 followers. So that's pretty good, and we're really happy with it. And thank you very much. Oh, and I would be remiss if I didn't invite everybody. We're doing a fall, I'm really trying to think about doing a fall series and then maybe a spring series, too. Maybe not every week, it'll probably be on Saturdays. We've been talking to the city about it. So we're doing one this Saturday. It'll be three bands, starts at 6:00, goes till 10:00. Hopefully, the weather will be fantastic, which is what I'm planning on. It'll be, we always try to do a wide mix of different types of bands and music. There'll be food vendors there and everything. And I tell you what, that grass looks like a big green carpet right now. So just give me a little across-the-fingers for a little less rain for the next couple of days, and it'll be fine, and hopefully, we can see you down. And if you do come down, come by the stage and introduce yourself, please. I'd love to introduce you to the crowd, too. So, all right, thank you very much.
Congratulations, JJ.
Amazing. Yes.
Thank you so much, and congratulations. Dr. Halkum, please introduce our Eileen Creighton Award winner for this year.
Mr. Jones, can you come forward, please? Mike Jones, Professor of Speech, is the 2023 Dr. Eileen Creighton Award for Teaching Excellent recipient. Mr. Jones is the 21st faculty member to receive this prestigious honor. Dr. Eileen Creighton Award for Teaching Excellent represents the late educator's distinguished legacy as a master teacher and serves as the benchmark that avail the faculty an opportunity to demonstrate many of the qualities of a master teacher, such as having expertise in their selected teaching discipline, the ability to teach diverse populations in the subject matter effectively, exhibiting their leadership abilities and commitment to the teaching profession, setting high standards to deliver exceptional instruction, and to cultivate the student's learning environment. We made them do a really extensive portfolio to be selected for this prestigious honor, and it is the ultimate honor here at our college to award the Dr. Eileen Creighton Teaching Excellent Award. So the documentation that was included in this extensive portfolio epitomizes his master teacher status. It showed his commitment and dedication to the college, his students, and his colleagues for over 24 years of service at the institution. Although his primary position is teaching, Mr. Jones has served the college in many capacities. He's a speech faculty, he's been Director of Forensics and e-learning coordinator, which included management oversight of the Department of e-learning and the alignment of the college's distance learning programs with state, regional, and federal standards. Mr. Jones was at the forefront of the college's online course offerings when they were expanded. As a mentor and collaborator to his colleagues and speech students, he was instrumental in helping establish and enhance the online environment to assure that the instructional delivery mode was effective and efficient. His portfolio included documented notes from colleagues and students as evidence of his collaborations with faculty, staff, and students. He has taught many, many, many students over 24 years here at the college. So he has served on many college committees as well. He chairs the committee on commencement ceremonies. So if you've gone to graduation, you see him there all the time. He is one of our orators, and he does a fantastic job at announcing names of our graduates. He maintains his membership and involvement with organizations such as the Texas Speech Communication Association, and he's been in that since 1991. He's been in the Texas Computer Educators Association, Texas Distance Learning Association as well. I could go on and on, and I have many, many, many achievements here, but we don't have all afternoon, but he's done a tremendous job, and I would like for all of us to congratulate him for the job well done.
Congratulations.
You know, we don't get to these positions alone, and if it weren't for my wife and kids kind of keeping me going, that's really been a big part of this. But I really, I want to thank this college. I've been here for a long time, and I have grown here, I have had the opportunity to serve, and I've learned a lot. And the ability to come up here and the opportunity to come up here and represent the faculty of this institution is an honor, because we have some amazing faculty, and there are so many others who should be up here receiving this award, and we just need to continue supporting them, and we appreciate all the support that you as a board give to this institution and to our faculty, and so therefore to our students. So thank y'all so much.
Thank you very much, Mr. Jones. I can't think of a better way to start our meetings than with recognizing our outstanding faculty today. So congratulations to you both, and especially for you, Mr. Jones. Thank you so much. We are going to move on to our Student Success Report and invite Dr. Leonard Rivera to talk about our Continuing Education Healthcare Programs.
Good afternoon, Dr. Eskamia, Chairman Scott, and Board of Regents. We want to be able to provide a succinct Student Success Report on our Delmar College's healthcare programs that are offered through our Continuing Education Program here at the college. And we've been very fortunate in that we've been able to offer these programs to a number of school districts and charter schools across the coastal bend. Currently, we're enrolled in about 24 to about 30 independent school districts, not including charter schools, where we offer at least five or six high-level certifications in the healthcare field. Some of those areas that we offer are EKG, phlebotomy, patient care technician, medical assisting, certified nurses' aid, and CPR. And these are just a few of the programs that we offer, which happen to be all high demand occupation, and we're offering these to our high school students and across, currently at the junior and senior levels. Under House Bill 8, thanks to Chairman Scott and Dr. Eskamia, we're now going to be able to actually increase this offering to even freshmen and sophomores moving forward. So what I want to be able to partake with you is that our staff, our staff that oversee the day-to-day operations of our healthcare programs, they have basically worked with the school districts, they've worked with the families of the students that we impact, they've been out at the Capitol Day, Delmar Capitol Day this past spring. They just are involved heavily to recruit and to provide outreach about healthcare programs. And healthcare programs, as everyone knows, is in short supply across the state of Texas, and I would dare say across the nation as a whole. And so we're trying to close that gap with these healthcare offerings. These are entry-level type of career occupations. However, many of these students do come back to Delmar, and they go and enter our end programs and other allied healthcare programs here at the college, and that's what we want to see more of moving forward. Going to our statistics, our number of certifications offered, let's see if I can do this myself. There we go. Want to provide highlight to our growth, and we have about three years' worth of growth there for you, and you'll see that back in 2021, we've averaged about 863 total certifications. The certifications aren't just that the students completed a course of study with Delmar College. These are national board exams that the students had completed and have passed, and I would dare say that these exams are very rigorous. And so we have a very high success passage rate with our high school students as well as our open enrollment students, and so you'll see that in 2021, we have, if you add up the columns, we have 863 total certifications that were offered to our healthcare students. And then you look over to the 21-22 data, and you see that we had a total of about 1,582 students that received their certifications, again, in an array of EKG, phlebotomy, patient care, certified nurses' aid, and so forth. And so you come to current year, 22-23, we actually increased that to 1,731 certifications. So we take everything in combination from 2021 to 22-23, we have over a 50% increase in the number of certifications that were awarded by Delmar College's healthcare programs, and I think that's something to be very proud of, and I know that I'm very proud of. I know Dr. Eskamia, Chairman Scott, and Ms. Keys, my boss, is very, very proud of, and obviously, I'm very proud of my staff that makes this work each and every day. And so to wrap things up, I think it's just more of a picture, you'll see that this is just a snapshot of what we do for our high school students every year in the spring before they graduate high school. They graduate with these certifications. You'll see in the larger photo there, a lot of the students receive their white coats. White coats are symbolic of students that have received a number of certifications. Typically, they're EKG, phlebotomy, and patient care technician. So these students are walking out of high schools with a minimum, if they wear a white coat, of three certifications, national certifications. And so again, thank you, the board, thank Ms. Keys and my staff for making this possible, and if there's any questions, I'd be happy to answer them.
Thank you, Dr. Rivera. Are there any questions for Dr. Rivera? We appreciate all that you do and the success of the program. Thank you.
Thank you.
We're going to move on to our College President's Report. Dr. Eskamia.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I'll be brief. I'd like to begin by talking about a very important training that the college undertook. The college administration came together, and so on this particular day, September 19th, for Incident Management Training. This is a very serious topic that unfortunately is something that we have to deal with, embrace, and develop. I want to thank Corpus Christi, I would thank Chief of Security Lauren White for all that she's done to put this together, you and your team, Lauren. Thank you for doing all of that, bringing Corpus Christi Police Department Deputy Chief Billy Breedlove, great friend of the college and alum, alumnus of Delmar College, cares very much about the college, who came in and did a tabletop demonstration. Thank you, Tammy, for all that you did to help coordinate this as well. This is a very important exercise, ladies and gentlemen, that I want y'all to know that it wasn't easy to deal with. We were dealing with a very serious topic, but very necessary. And so I think we spent the better part of the day going through situations and discussions and so forth, and I want to hats off to the team, and Tammy, thank you for your leadership on this, Ms. McDonald for bringing everybody together for this most important training, and we will continue to advance and develop this training for the rest of the college in incoming semesters. Also, a little bit later that day, I moved quickly, I had to take another phone call with the Texas Association of Community Colleges Business Advisory Committee. I bring this up, Regents, to let you know that I remain in close contact with a group that was integral to supporting us throughout the legislative session. It's a group of business leaders from throughout the state of Texas. Region Scott has participated many times on these calls and with this particular group as well. And this business advisory group was a piece that was missing for many sessions before, and up until, I think, just, it must be about three or four years ago, something similar around there, this notion came up to develop this group. Having leaders from all over the state of Texas, leading all facets of business and industry, support and participate in this particular group and support community colleges is fantastic. They continue to do it, even though we are in the interim session, and just want you to know that I continue to be a part of that and that that group continues to support us through this committee. A couple days later, on the 21st, the Community College Leadership Meeting took place, and this is another follow-up meeting that I want everyone to know that I continue to maintain close ties with the leaders of the Texas Association of Community Colleges, and particularly in nurturing the relationship with the Commissioner of Higher Education and his staff, Commissioner Harrison Keller. Those conversations continue going, and I remain part of that Leadership Council, they call it, although I'm not an officer anymore on the board. This is something that, as a result of our work with HBA, both Chair Scott's and my participation keeps me involved and at the table with the Texas Higher Education Coordinating Board. And finally, there's an annual report for Title IX and Senate Bill 212 that I must produce to you all and read to you all, so bear with me. I apologize, but I have to read a script, and this is about Texas Education Code Section 51253C that has to do with the reporting requirements of data around a piece that I've contributed or produced in your packet, and this has to do with crime statistics and Title IX and those kinds of things. There's a summary of some findings and some other things like that. Bear with me so I can read this to you, and I apologize, but I have to do this once a year, and so here we go. Under Texas Education Code Section 5151253C, I am required to submit a report at least once during each fall or spring semester to the Board of Regents and post the summary data report on Delmar College Internet Website. On the website, this report contains reports received by employees under the Texas Education Code Section 51252 concerning sexual harassment, sexual assault, dating violence, or stalking in particular, as it relates to criminal statistics as defined in Texas Education Code Section 512551251, and any disciplinary actions taken under Texas Education Code Section 51255. For the purposes of complying with the Chief Executive Officer's reporting requirements, I have provided you with a summary data report that includes all of the required reporting information from this time period of September 1, 2022, through August 31, 2023. The reports received may be applicable in multiple reporting categories, and therefore, the summary data in the categories may not add up to the totals of other categories. Any other questions? Any specific questions, please just call me, and we'll sit down and go through it. As required, a summary data report has been provided to the Board of Regents. Also, a summary data report is posted on the Delmar College website. And third, last but not least, this week, I will be submitting to the Texas Higher Education Coordinating Board the Chief Executive Officer's Annual Certification from the Delmar College in, is, that, I'm sorry, I apologize, that Delmar College is in substantial compliance. Pardon my stumbling on that last bit. So again, a bit of a formality has to do with the sexual harassment, sexual assault, and dating violence and stalking specifically. It's a law that requires this reporting, and that concludes my report.
Are there any questions for Dr. Eskamia on his report? Seeing none. We will move on. Thank you, Dr. Eskamia.
Sure, thank you.
We will move on to our Regents Report. We had a number of Regents who were able to attend our state Texas Trustees Conference in Fort Worth last month, and so we want to give this opportunity for folks to share a highlight or two, and if there's any relevant handouts or information that you would like distributed to your fellow board members, please get that to Ms. Pettis, and she would send that on for us. So for those who were able to attend, would you like to give us a highlight or two? Mr. Loeb, I'm going to start with you.
Well, I'll cover one that I was in and I didn't see anybody else in. I went into a presentation on esports that a lot of the other community colleges in the state have gotten involved in, and they're actually able to, the National Association that governs, our sports governing body, has a esports division now, and so a lot of the other community colleges have started esports teams, and basically, it's, I think, a $1,500 fee for the whole team, for the whole college, and they have different tiers, and the starting tier that most use is basically a club sport tier where it is not limited to students, professors, Regents, faculty, staff, alumni can do it. In fact, Alvin Community College, their starting team was all dual-credit students, so I think we're going to look at that, because it could be a good opportunity for us to do recruitment as well, where we can have our dual-credit students involved while they're still in high school. And they can play from home, or if we fundraise, we can create a room here or at one of the campuses for them to play in. But at the simplest level, everybody can play from home on their own device, so it's pretty cool.
Thank you. And there's a sponsor for that club, I think, or two.
Yep. $1,500, I'll write the check.
We can raise that. Who else would like to go? Who's next?
I'll go.
Mr. Kelly.
Once again, I was impressed with how far ahead of the curve we are already at Delmar. I was attending a seminar to sisters who have a background in the entertainment industry, and they were talking about software program that they were developing or had developed, which was designed for incoming students. It was a resource where you could figure out what you wanted to do with your life, the various colleges that offered the programs you needed to get certifications or the degrees you needed, and I was thinking about how amazing this is, and Dr. Turner, who was attending that, and Delia, pointed out to me that we already do it. So once again, it appears as though we were ahead of the curve. So I was very impressed with that, because I was sold on that program. I could definitely see the value of that.
Thank you. Who's next? Mr. Garza?
Yeah, I, like, Mr. Kelly, I was also impressed by how ahead of the curve we are, and we're talking about things that House Bill 8 can impact, and the money's going to come down from the state, but it's also going to require us to do additional reporting than we've done because of the fact that so many of the funds are going to be based on results, outcomes. And again, I think that we're ahead of the curve in a sense that we've been able to always respond and react to always respond and react to like the reporting required for the HERF funds that we had in the time of COVID. And so we were we were already prepared. Our staff is prepared to be able to handle a lot of the reporting that's going to be required in order to be able to qualify us for monies. Some of the other things that I also took into account or was impressed by, we had two presentations and keynote talks at some of the luncheons or dinners related to AI and how AI is going to also impact all areas of society, including higher education or educational systems. And and again, I think, based on some of the things that we've been able to pivot or been able to react to in our recent challenging challenges related to to our budget and to some of the issues that we had this year, I think that we're we're going to be prepared to be able to utilize those tools in the best manner possible and position ourselves so that we can continue to compete in in the area of community colleges and higher education. Thank you.
Dr. Dummy?
You know, we have to be proud of Delmar because, you know, when it comes to closing the gap and improving student income, I mean, improve income as well, but outcome, you know, we're already doing it. And when you go through these conferences, they're all talking about that. And they all touch up on how they're doing and what they are doing. But you know, being ahead of the curve is what makes Delmar College one of the foremost colleges in South Texas, Texas, as a matter of fact. The few that I've attended were pretty interesting. One is on mental health. And of course, we're we're working with that already. But, you know, being able to recognize it and making it available for every student. How important is that, especially in this post-COVID era? So there was some great information out there. AI, that's another important one. You know, how are we going to address that? And how can we incorporate that into learning? That is going to be the the biggest question in the future. So it was a it was a great overall, it was a great conference, and I really learned a lot from it.
So the the point of the conference or the theme of the conference was around innovation. And Dr. Villarreal, I think there could have been some really interesting conversations around strategic planning, had you been there for some of the the debriefing we were doing at the time. So I look forward to an opportunity for us to, as a board, have that conversation around how AI and innovation not just is going to impact students' academic work, but would impact the college's ability to serve our students. And so is looking, there are a number of colleges that are developing and using external resources and some some third-party vendors to answer routine advising questions. And I'm not saying that that things are always routine, but we know that there's a set of frequently asked questions, and there's there's information that students seek, where do I find this? Where do I get that? Even to the point of maybe some of the tutoring services to a certain extent. But but that resource question can could sometimes be handled via AI responses on behalf of the college versus a personal response. And then save that 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 very valuable person-to-person exchange and that face-to-face connection when there are mental health challenges, when there are 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 questions or a resource that needs more customized approach. So there are a number of colleges that are doing some things with with AI in that regard and to how they serve their students. I know that we one one session that I went to on just the transcripts and how a student gets a copy of their transcripts, which I know we do, and we found information that we have 24-hour access through parchment, 24-hour access for our students to get a copy of their transcript. What is interesting about what Houston Community College is doing, they're actually layering on all certifications and learning, whether it's from Houston Community College or from somewhere else, so that there is a complete student record of everything that that student has obtained, whether it's Coursera, whether it's Google Certifications, whether it's another college. But there is a complete copy of that student learning record that's accessible to that student to then give to any institution or any employer that might need might need that documentation. So it's a service that they provide to their current and former students to provide provide access to their student learning record. So just things like that, that we're I know that you all probably hear a lot more about them and know a lot more about them, but but bringing those ideas, I think, to the forefront for the board, we're we're learning and we're understanding the potential resource allocation around some of those innovative ways to serve our students. So look forward to to those opportunities. Anything else on the conference? We've got a number of us going to the National Conference next week, and so we're looking forward to more learning and more opportunities for for us to get better at our jobs, these these high-paying jobs that we hold we hold around this desk. I do have two announcements for you related to appraisal district boards. The Nuasis County, we've been notified by the Nuasis County Appraisal District Board that the appointment process for our appointee is due by the end of the year. So making an announcement that we're going to open up that opportunity for individuals who are interested in representing Delmar College on the Nuasis County Appraisal District to please send a letter to me via the President's Office or the General Counsel with information about your interest and qualifications to serve. We ask that you maybe limit that to just three or four pages. Don't send us documents and documents, but.
Will we put it at an announcement with the specific requirements?
Yes.
Before they can get all that? So just.
And I would say maybe by the Wednesday before our next board meeting, which would be November 8th, would be the deadline for those letters to be received if you're interested. So that application process will take place between now and our November meeting, and we would have an opportunity to appoint. There is a there is a constitutional amendment that's going to be voted on in November that will potentially change the makeup and structure of the appraisal district board. But in the interim, we still have an appointment that is due to be happen in November. So we'll ask for interested parties to please let us know. And then we also had a notification from the San Patricio County Appraisal District that nominations are due for the San Patricio Appraisal District by October 15th. We only have a small number of shares that we vote on those, and so we have not we don't have a direct appointment. We will have an opportunity to review those who were nominated at our November meeting and determine how we would like to vote our limited shares at the November meeting as well for the San Patricio County Appraisal District Board of Directors.
I think it's less than 1%.
Less than 1% of total shares.
You're not going to swing very many elections that way.
So if there's any questions related to either of those, ask me or Mr. Rivera. And any anything else for Regents' Reports? Seeing none, we'll move on to our staff reports. And our first one is regarding the statistical profile, which is at your place. And Ms. Keys is going to tell us about the book in front of us. She is not going to read the statistical profile to us.
There you go. Thank you very much. The statistical profile is something that the college is very proud of, and it's actually an award-winning document that that's been out there for almost 30 years. It resides on our website and is prepared by the Office of Institutional Research. And our group is here with us today, and I'm going to introduce them in a minute. This is the website, and the individual, Susheal Palamoni, is the Director of Institutional Research, and his email is there for your additional insight in case you have questions or anything like that. But we do provide this every year, and it's a huge wealth of information and data. My name's on it, however, I do not claim to provide any of the data. This team does all the work with the support of, of course, other areas of the college, such as the Registrar's Office, Student Affairs, and our Computer Information System Group that provide all work together to make this come together. And I'd like for our team to stand up, please, and I'll introduce them. First of all, is Susheal Palamoni, who is our director. Susheal. And Susheal's been with us for over 20 years and has worked on many, many grants. And when you ask for specific data and it to be provided in a certain manner and certain parameters, it's really Susheal's leadership that pulls most of this together. He's just phenomenal. Jane Haas is Senior Research Associate. Jane, along with Shane Stewart. Shane, Newman Wong, and Julio Barazza. Thank you. Barazza. And Carolyn Sorles is our Administrative Assistant in the department. But this group comes together and works very diligently to provide this information. And as you'll see as I go through it very briefly, it's great detail and and really is there at your fingertips for whatever you need. So thank you, team, for being here. This is one example that comes through the student characteristics or student profile section. I know many times you have excellent questions regarding students, and you'd be amazed at the data that is in this profile on students. This is showing an example of how far back the data goes. This goes from 1980 to 2022, this one chart, and gives a capstone picture of just three of the characteristics of being minority, female, or part-time student. But this is one small example of how this has shifted and grown over the last decades. Another piece is kind of different and interesting on our, oops, excuse me, that is me. Thank you, is developmental education. And as you notice, the areas in the middle that overlap, that shows how many of the students must take multiple forms of developmental ed as they come into our college. Almost 70% of the first-time-in-college students who entered in 2022 had to take one, at least one developmental course to come into the college, to take college-level courses. So this is a relevant piece, and there's much more information on this if you look in the statistical profile. An in-depth data section is on graduates and outcomes, and you see a listing here of just the types of information that's in there. And within each of these categories, you will see numerous tables and detailed statistics by program and by grouping. So if you're ever curious as to a certain program and how many students graduated within a certain year, that data is all there, specifically to that program, summed up by department and summed up by division, and then college-wide. So this data is aggregated in multiple forms. I know quite often we talk about certification and licensure pass rates. It's all there, and our persistence rates. Those are two key indicators that we talk about within our strategic plan. This is an example of the change in a variety of graphs that comes together that looks at different awards and type by academic year. This goes back to 2012 to 2122 and shows the difference in our transfer degrees, AAS, certificates, and just our other awards. And as we're looking at House Bill 8, this type of data becomes more and more significant because these are our outcomes that we'll be paid on. If you look at 2017, 18, that's quite a year, and then you can see the dip that was caused by the COVID pandemic in 2019, 20. We also have an overview of special programs and semesters. E-learning and dual-credit flexible scheduling is always of great interest of our board, and it breaks down those classes and those enrollment periods by section and gives you amazing information in all those areas. Now, flexible scheduling is what we call our eight-week terms, along with our rapid tracks, our Maymester, our weekend classes, all these non-standard lengths of degree plans and schedules. And so all of this is out there for you to find out specifically how many students come within what period of time and how that impacts overall enrollment. This is an example of one of the graphs that they have in this section that goes into what we call non-traditional enrollment, where you can see the the impact of dual-credit over the last several years, and then flexible scheduling in our off-campus programs, and how this all varies throughout. And it's quite impactful. When you look at the one of the sections we have on faculty and staff, quite often you'll ask how many faculty members have a PhD, or how many faculty members have a certain type of background, and what are the credentialing requirements. And this graph is just one of many that's in that area that shows how many of our faculty, our tenure-track faculty, have a doctorate. Over 31% of our tenure-track faculty have a doctorate degree, master's degree at 52%, bachelor's, and then our associate's degrees. And each of these degree categories is governed by the Texas Higher Education Coordinating Board and SAC COC as to what type of course is being taught, and then what type of degree or what level within the areas of degrees is required by the accrediting body. And that's a quick summary of that great detail that you've been given and a very small snippet, really, of what's within that dataset. But it's all there on our website, and all of the historical trends are there as far as how many books go back. And I have to admit that or recognize again that this team has won multiple awards at the state level for the type of data that's been given. And I've never had a consultant on campus that looked at data that didn't say they've never seen this at any other university or campus at this depth and breadth. Questions?
Not a question, well, a question. The historic data going back, is all of that on the website as well, or multiple years of the statistical profile on the website?
Multiple years and where they were, where we could scan them and get them in, go back that far. And if you don't find the year you're interested in, we'll do have a hard copy in our offices.
So I was cleaning out some files, and I keep the current one, but I don't keep the back ones because I don't have room for all that paper anymore, but they are available. So.
Yes. And many of the many of the graphs and datasets through there go back, like I showed you the one that goes back to 1980, go back a trend. Yes, within that one document.
Yes.
Within that one document.
So you get longitudinal data all throughout, going back decades now.
Yes. Right. Thank you all very much.
Thank you so much. If you have any questions on the use of the profile, be sure and let Dr. Eskamia or Ms. Keys know, and they'll they'll get you an answer if they don't have it themselves.
Yes. Okay, thank you all very much.
Thank you.
Thank you, team.
Thanks to the team. Thank you all.
Thank you. Dr. Villarreal, give us an update on our current strategic plan and on our future plan process.
Thank you, Dr. Eskamia, Regent Scott, Counsel. Thank you so much for giving me the opportunity to talk again about the strategic planning progress here at Delmar College. So we're in an interesting time period here at the college in that, as VP Keys and I talked about, we're currently driving two trains. We have the 2019-2024 train that it's almost at its final destination. And then we have the 2024-29 train that is just being prepared to begin the journey. So during this academic year, if you will be patient with us, we will be updating you on both plans simultaneously. So today, I'd like to start with an overview of the 2019-24 process and give you updates on Goal One of that plan, which will include the most current data that we have. Then I will provide a brief update on the 24-29 planning process and close with plans for board engagement for the following academic year. So after today's update on Goal One, you will continue to receive updates on each of the goals through June of 2024 for the current plan. And then in August, we will wrap up that plan and move forward with the launch of the next plan. So if you'd like, we can also have a board visioning workshop in November of this year, which will continue the conversation that you began with Dr. Ellis regarding the vision of the college, and we also discuss the mission. So today, I'd like to spend about five to 10 minutes going over Goal One of the six goals in the current plan. So just for Goal One, we focus entirely on student completion. So our intention here was to create pathways for the student to achieve their educational goals, clear and consistent, seamless pathways. So as you can tell, the college looks at a variety of measures to really understand student completion here at Delmar. KPI One, which is our first key performance indicator. So this is the number of credit degrees and certificates awarded. So in 2019, our goal was to have at least 2,200 credit students complete a certificate, associate's, or bachelor's degree. Now, as you can see, our numbers have increased since 2020, and we continue to work towards that target of 24. Now, as you can see, our numbers have increased since 2020, and we continue to work towards that target of 2,400. However, as you can tell, I mentioned credit. So, this slide really only tells half of the Delmar College story. If we move on here to the next slide, this also includes some of our dual-credit numbers, I'm sorry, some of our continuing education numbers within our certificates awarded within three major programs here, our healthcare, our safety, and our NCC ER. So, if you look at 2020 and 21, because 21 and 22 are still pending, the amount of students completing certificates in this area was well over 4,000. So, these type of programs and certificates include our Certified Nurse Aid, Philobotomy, EKG, Patient Care Technician, and within our CE Safety, it's things such as OSHA 10, OSHA 30, and Food Management. We added this graph just to show you what our students accomplished when we put our credit and our continuing education degrees and certificates together. Our students attain above and beyond the target of 2,400, which the college did set as a goal back in 2019, but only really considering our credit students. So, what you're going to start seeing in the future plan is really that shift in how the college looks at completion and how the changes in the KPIs are going to reflect the completion for all students here at the college, which is really going to align with House Bill 8 and the new metrics that are coming our way. So, going on to KPI Two. KPI Two monitors our graduation rates, but specifically for our first-time-in-college students. So, what you are looking at here are students who are enrolled in the college for a first time as a full-time, degree-seeking student. So, that means you have to be enrolled in a minimum, excuse me, minimum of 12 semester credit hours. So, did we help our students decrease the amount of time to complete and the number of excess credit hours that a student attempts in order to pursue that associate degree and certificate? So, we have met our thresholds for this area, meaning the absolute minimum that we want to move forward with and keep striving for, but we still have not hit our major target areas for our students graduating within three years and four years. However, we have hit that target for six-year graduation rates. Now, moving on to KPI Three and Four, these are our DMC students checking to see if they are taking less time to complete that associate's degree, with the average in 2022 of being about 4.8 years. They're also taking less semester credit hours to obtain a good degree compared to where we started in 2018, 2019. And we are still moving towards that target. If you look at KPI Five, did the college increase the number of students who are enrolled full-time? Now, as you can see here, the numbers have stayed consistently with the majority of Delmar College students continuing to attend on a part-time basis. Now, this does not include our dual-credit students. KPI Six. Now, KPI Six focuses back on that first-time-in-college student, taking a full load again of at least 12 semester credit hours to complete a degree or certificate. However, now on this slide, we're focusing on transfer to a four-year institution. So, we have met our threshold and are staying at about, above 10% of our students who are transferring, excuse me, transferring, but we still have not met the target. Continuing with KPI Six, which monitors the transfer numbers. This shows you students in credit programs who are transferring annually. When I say transferring annually, that means in that subsequent fall semester. So, right now, we have over 1,700 students who are transferring to a four-year, and about 200 students transferring either to another community or technical college.
Are those without a degree, or is that included in the degree transfer?
I'm not sure, PBD?
I'm not sure. I was just curious if that included.
I'm thinking this, if I'm guessing, I think this is what the, there's Shashil, there's the expert.
Gotcha. They transfer to another institution without a degree from us. Okay.
I'm glad I didn't guess, Shashil, because I wasn't going to say that. Thank you for the clarification.
Thank you, sir.
And our top four transferring universities for 2020, 2021 were within the Texas A&amp;M system here in Corpus Christi, College Station, Kingsville were the top three. They're rounded out with UTSA and Texas State as our top university transferring institutions. Some of our students continue to move to other community colleges, as mentioned here. If you pay attention here, you'll see a lot of it, it's really about, I think, moving to another city to attend either University of Texas or Texas A&amp;M, because we have Austin Community College, Blinn College, and then also students transferring to San Antonio College in San Antonio. KPI Seven is our last goal when we look at Goal One for completion, and this focuses on the success of our dual-credit students. So, this chart is giving you three different data points. So, that first one is a student who earns a college degree or certificate by the time they complete high school, students who enroll at DMC within a year of completing high school for the second piece. And the third shows you are students who are earning a college degree or certificate within one year of completing high school. So, again, moving to our continuing education enrollment, you can see that our CE team has been very busy in our high schools. So, along with our credit programs, Dr. Rivera and his team have been working extra hard. He gave you the numbers earlier of the high schools that they're in right now, offering all of those extra programs under continuing education, and they are thriving.
So, a quick question. I see the 1,200 number here, but then on the previous page, there were a lot, is that because students are getting multiple certificates?
Sometimes students are getting multiple certificates, and sometimes the certificates don't have that national accreditation standard. So, we're looking at different, we are looking at different numbers counted at the time.
I would say it would be good on this one that we also track unduplicated students getting a certificate. So, you know, because I noticed at graduation, some of, some of them are getting three or four, and so it would be good to also keep track of how many got at least one.
Thank you. So, the initiatives and strategies that support the goals and objectives of the strategic plan are extensive. There are fiddle grants like Project Sinda that help with professional development, resources for advisors to create meaningful and consistent engagement with our students. And the college also continues with the planning and implementation of anthology. Anthology is going to help streamline so many of our student-focused areas, including enrollment, curriculum management, and many more areas here at the college. Does anybody have any questions about the data?
I have a.
Go ahead.
I have a quick question, Dr. Villarreal. Refresh my memory, and I'm sorry I don't remember this. Did we set these goals and KPIs prior to COVID?
We did.
We did, right? And did we adjust them at all after COVID?
We, we have goals that we set every year to year, and some of them were adjusted. And so, but again, because right now you're looking at metrics from 2020 to 2022, even after we've adjusted for the fourth and fifth year, we still haven't reported those yet.
Okay, okay, thank you.
And so, if you think about it, we started having these discussions in 2018. The plan started in 2019. And so, you're going to start to hear, as we start talking about the 24-29 plan, the differences in our rhetoric, the way we talk, the way we speak about our students, and the way that, that we look at the data is going to be significantly different thanks to the work of House Bill Eight.
I think you're going to find that we're, in some ways contradicting ourselves, but in some ways saying the same thing we've been saying for years. It's just now that the state is on board with the way we've been seeing things, looking the lenses from which we've been viewing our students. It's really gratifying, I must say, that, to see the state identify some things. I've got some, I was given some early data, stay tuned, I'll pass it around after. But I was given some early data on how the state is now measuring students. It's just a whole different ballgame. Vice President Benavides Dominguez brought this to me. I don't know, you just can't make this stuff up. We've been leading this conversation for a very long time, and it's coming to fruition. And so, that's why our plan, I love the analogy of the two trains. One of them is just an old coal train and coal-driven train, and now this one's like a hypersonic magnetized blah-blah-blah train. This HB Eight is making all the difference.
It really is.
Yeah, I just, not trying to play Monday morning quarterback or anything like that, but looking at the KPI Five, which has to do with putting, putting a focus on full-time versus part-time students. And the only concern that I have is that, I mean, for a historically economically challenged community like ours, where a lot of our students are part-time because they have to, they've got, they've got family responsibilities, they've got finances that, that force them to work and have to come to school part-time.
Thank you for bringing that up, Regent Garza. I did not plan to be P Dominguez. So, we did have that discussion in the past few weeks with our Student Affairs. We don't have actual data on that, but we have our Student Affairs team who works day in and day out with these students, who hear them coming in, so anecdotally we hear it, and then we heard it in our recent focus groups for the next plan. Our students need to eat, they need to work, and so, so many of them are choosing to go part-time because they're working. And then we've also heard our parents, who are students, say, "We want to be there for our small children as well, too, as we continue taking courses." So, thank you for bringing that up. We're going to have some follow-up discussions on, on that specific KPI and, and how to change that.
Yeah, I just, I don't, don't think that setting targets, part-time versus full-time, is realistic in certain communities. And again, one of our, particularly our community ethic is challenged in trying to get students, certain students, working students, to be able to take, do full-time.
We wholeheartedly agree. And what we're learning is, again, five years ago, there was that big push of producing more sophomores and knowing that if you go full-time, there's less time for life to get in the way. And so, we were really following those initiatives around the country as we were looking at this. But as you're finding, maybe this really isn't where we need to be as a college and where we need to be prioritizing, instead prioritizing other, other areas for our students to be successful. So, thank you.
Well, I think some of the things that are being prioritized in HB Eight, right, are going to lead us away from this particular metrics, I think. Because it's going to be really about just getting them finished. If they finish in three years or four years or five years, just getting them to get some particular qualification is going to be key, getting them to workplace.
Yes, sir, thank you.
I'd add that I agree with that statement, that I think we could, we could get ourselves into unintended consequences by creating expectations as to what percentage of our students are full-time, especially when we talk about recruiting and things like that. And I think we should always, you know, strive to provide whatever education we can to anybody who's willing. And, but I, I think that's an important number to track. I don't know that it's something that we hold anybody accountable for that number meaning anything. But there may, there may be some good KPIs on how well we are doing responding to the needs of our part-time students and giving them the capability to be full-time if they want or to balance their education with their other needs, you know? Are we, are we getting in touch with them on any sort of frequent basis and saying, you know, "What do you need to keep going? You know, what are your challenges?" And so, I would, I would just throw that comment in the mix, but I, you know, we could spend an entire workshop talking about that, what Rudy just brought up.
We could, I think, if I may, I apologize, Regent Lo, but you're, you're hitting a spot that's, that's really, we struggle with because the realities of our students are, as we've described here, very complex. And you add to that an economy that is doing what it's doing and drawing them in and allowing them to, to make a living or have to make a living and juggle school and so forth. I think that emphasizes or really allows us to emphasize the need for these short-term credentials along the way, to take those smaller bites. That's why those have been so important to our economy. And that's where we've, in this big industrial base with only 350,000 people in the city and 500,000 really serving this, this economy that is, that is the eighth-largest economy in, in the world, think of it that way. And so, that right there is different than any other place in the world. And so, the constraints and the restraints and the draw into the workforce and, and the economic, the economy altogether is really, is something that is unique. I've often thought about how unique that is, but, but again, going back, those smaller bites at the apple so that our students, no matter what stage of life they're in, can take those and attain those more incrementally and be recognized, and now being supported by the state is a whole different game. So, it's a much more, and as we do this, as we continue with our next strategic plan, those are the things we have to talk about. And we have to discuss those complexities, I'll stop there.
Yeah, I mean, I, I think, you know, we have that time to degree, but we don't have a time to certificate metric, you know? Or, or a general time to, you know, positive exit, whether it's transfer.
Convertibility and stackability were, is exactly where that came from, and it, it was largely here and maybe just a couple of other spots around the state during the legislative session and around HB Eight because of that, that very reason right there. So, I think we're all saying the same thing.
Yeah, because I mean, I, I think it's important because I know we've had the conversation in the past where people have talked about enrollment or, you know, credit enrollment. And one of, one of my points in that conversation always is, if the economy is doing well, we're going to have fewer students because we have fewer people coming back to get retrained for a new job. And so, even aggregate enrollment can sometimes be a deceptive number because it may just be a sign that the economy is doing really well, and the people who came to us before have jobs doing what they got trained to do here. And so, that, we can look at that as a negative, but it can also be a positive, that they're out there working and making a living, so.
Thank you, Regent Lo, Regent Garza, for your comments. And I think it's, it's really great for the Strategic Planning Steering Committee to know how invested the board is in this and to hear that we're all on the same page, and you've really been paying attention and understanding the paradigm shift that we're facing and where we're headed. So, so thank you for that, much appreciated. Any more questions? So, if you look at the rest of the fall here on this board engagement chart, you'll get a report on Goal Two in December. Again, if you'd like, we can do a visioning workshop to continue the mission and vision statement for the next plan with the board. And then in the spring, we'll round out reports on Goals Three through Six and then give you that draft of the new strategic plan to work on as we head into the fall for final board approval. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Dr. Villarreal. Update on our emergency or report on our Emergency Operations Plan, Ms. McDonald.
Thank you, Chair. Today, we'll be providing you an overview of our Emergency Operations Plan. But first, what I wanted to do is to recognize our Emergency Management Planning Team. This is a subset of our Incident Management Team, which we will talk about a little bit further in the presentation. But this is the team that comes together to work on these types of documents, like Dr. Eskamia talked about earlier on the training or the tabletop exercises. This team helps put those meetings and opportunities for training together. So, I wanted to recognize John Strabos, Lauren White, Chris Tweedle, Alex Cahill, and Jessica Alanis. And thank them for their work, because this has been, I'm going to say, a labor of love from, from the group. And I appreciate all their time and attention and their expertise that they have for putting the document together. So, thank y'all, appreciate it. Appreciate it. So the emergency operation plan is required under Texas Education Code 37.2071. And it requires submission of the EOP to the Texas School Safety Center. The Texas School Safety Center is an official university-level research center at Texas State University. The center is tasked in Chapter 37 of the Texas Education Code and in the Governor's Homeland Security Strategic Plan with key school safety initiatives and mandates. It serves as a clearinghouse for safety and security information for K-312 and junior colleges. Emergency operation plans are submitted to the Texas School Safety Center annually for review and compliance purposes. So in January of '22 was our, was our, the first time we had the mandate, we had to submit our first full document of our emergency operations plan. And that was submitted. And then in October of '22, the Governor's Office asked for a second submission, that they were requesting all entities submit a revised EOP to include some additional elements, specifically for active threats. So we had to resubmit the plan with some new required elements to the plan. So we resubmitted that in October of '22. In December of '22, the college received a comment report from Texas State School Safety Center that the review was complete. And at that time, they required no additional information. And basically what that means is that we met the standard criteria and requirements for the plan. They are requiring a resubmission of the plan. It was requested by the Texas State School Safety Center and the due date is this October 25th. So revisions to the EOP are in progress to incorporate some new requirements. For example, there will be a promulgation letter from Dr. Eskamia, which basically says that he is accepting the plan, he's authorizing the plan, and he's initiating the plan for us to distribute to the, to the employee college community. It will include a distribution tracking page. There's a hazardous analysis table that we need to work on and insert. And those are just some examples of some new requirements as we resubmit. The board was provided with a link to the draft document. It's not for public consumption right now since it is currently in draft, but I wanted you to have the opportunity to get a feel of the document and what we will be submitting by the deadline later on this month. The plan serves as a basis for emergency management. And it's at the global level of the college. It does not dive, go down deep into the department level. This is the global plan for the college. It establishes information to, excuse me, to establish a framework for operations during various types of incidents and during different stages of any type of emergency management. It also establishes the use, it provides us guidelines during emergency recovery and restoration. And I know if you look through the document, it has a glossary of terms so that when everyone is, is communicating and speaking, that we know the language. We're speaking the same language and we know what to follow and we have the same terminology used because it's very important in any type of emergency is that if you use a, a particular name or terminology, that everyone understands what it is. So the glossary information is, is very important. It also establishes the use of the National Incident Management System for Incident Command. And what, it's called NIMS. And what that is, it's a set of principles that provides a systemic proactive approach for all involved entities to work seamlessly to prevent, protect against, respond to, recover from, and mitigate the effects of incidents, regardless of the cause, size, location, or complexity, in order to reduce loss of life, property, and harm to the environment. So that's what NIMS is. The plan also provides and defines roles and responsibilities for the incident management team and establishes an emergency communication flow. So if we go to this chart, so this is the chart of our incident management team. So you'll see that it's color-coded. So there are different roles and responsibilities, and our team has been trained on their roles and responsibilities at one of our meetings that we had in May. So you can see the, the employees that are assigned. So when this is activated, and we could activate the, all of the, the boxes, basically, it just depends on the incident, or we might just activate a couple of them. It just depends on the incident and, and what type that it is. So we've received training on our roles and responsibilities. Everyone has been given their, a book, basically, their, their homework to review their roles and responsibilities. And so this is what we follow. And this is part of that NIMS system. It's also called Incident Command System. So this is the guideline that we follow in any type of, of incident, regardless of the size. So depending on the size of an incident, will depend on how much of this chart gets activated. We also have recently added a post-incident care team. I think you see that off to the top right. What we have found, we have informally had this in place, but we have formally put it into our plan that we know that any time an incident happens, that we need to make sure we take care of our students and employees. And what resources do we have, depending on the type of incident, that we can help take care of their needs. So we did add that as a formal piece to the plan, a post-incident care team as needed. As part of the roles and responsibilities, which is, which is a basic of the Incident Command System, you'll see in the box to the right, which is labeled Public Information Officer slash Community Liaison. So for example, for that role, it serves as a conduit for information to internal and external stakeholders, both during an emergency and follow-ups, some type of follow-up communication. Could still be during an emergency, but also after. And this could include media or other organizations that are seeking information directly about an incident or event. So this is how that's established. But it also leads into our emergence, our Incident Emergency Communication Network. So this is, an emergency just happened and we have to communicate to certain groups or certain people that are part of that initial response. So the PIO serves as a conduit for emergency alert using various means. So if we, it depends on the incident. So let's say the incident happens and Chief White is in command. She notifies me, I'm next in line, and gives me some information that an emergency is happening. I get ahold of Jeff Olson, who's our VP, but in this role, he's the PIO. And we have, basically, to get out that emergency alert, which I know all of you are signed up for, it's called DMC Alert, we have some pre-prescribed canned messages and just fill in the blanks because we want to get it out and get it out now. So that initial first emergency alert is sent out with that, we pick one of the pre, pre-scripted messages and fill in the blanks. This is happening, this location, this building, and then we tell people in a sense, maybe what's going on. So, yes, sir.
Now, I, I'd just like to add, regions, especially for the newer regions, the way we've handled incidents as they've come up has been noticed across the state. I guess, I, I don't know how, or, and what I mean by that is, I've been approached by other, my colleagues, counterparts, the presidents at other colleges and asking, how do you deal with the hurricanes? They knew we've gone through all these kinds of things. And they said, how do you, how do you apprise the board? I said, when I can, as I can. And the expectation of this board has been something that has kind of, kind of, has a little reputation out there. And they said, they'll let Mark take care of the college, right? Well, Mark lets the team take care of the college and so forth. And, and so I just want you to know that when things come up, as they come up, you'll get a call. Chair Scott always says, Mark, just go take care of the problem, right? Go take care of that first, take care of people, and then report back to us. I just want you to know that you have colleagues and counterparts across the states that think that they need to be apprised at every step of the way, as I was informed in Fort Worth the other day. And so we are sharing our information about these things and about how things actually work and/or should work as it relates to communications to the board of regions. Don't get me wrong, Chair Scott and I will be in immediate contact via, via Augie or myself, absolutely. But I just want you to know that that, that is a level of comfort that we have, the team knows that, so that they can just get out and take care of business. Thank you.
Thank you. So we have various ways to communicate. If an emergent situation is happening right now, like we said, DMC Alert. We also have a system that's called Alertus, which basically, if a computer's on the DMC network, the Alertus will take over that computer. And whatever message is sent out during DMC Alert, it will scroll across the screen. We also have social media platforms. And then we also have some of, our fire systems are equipped where they have beacons. Or some of them, eventually, we are working on, and it's on our list, I know Alex is, will be glad when we get moving on this, is the ability to have voice. It, it could, it could speak and basically just read the message that came out through the DMC Alert. So what, one, one good thing about this, and I know Jessica Montalvo has tested the system because she's our software expert for, for all of the, these type of systems, is that if Mr. Olson goes in and he, we have to send out one of those emergency messages, he can do all at the same time. He can do DMC Alert, he can do Alertus, and he can do the beacons. So we don't have to have multiple people taking care of multiple things. It's just one time he goes in and he punches all, he punches, yes, do all of this. So we have made some great progress, especially this year. This is one of the outcomes. We had some informal things in place, but we formalized our emergency communication network. So once the, the first alert has gone out, then I provide Ms. Keys with an update and then she has her, her groups that she advises. And I also call Dr. Eskamia and provide him with an update. And then I wait until I get updates from our chief. And then the cycle starts over again, then I provide more updates back to Mr. Olson and then we give follow-ups. So that's how the emergency part of it is handled. So here's some overview of some highlights of the, of the plan. We have procedures and guidelines, and there are some very specific incidents like active threat, medical emergencies, severe weather. If you go into the annexes, that's where the more detailed information is provided for these different type of incidents that may happen. And there's also, like I mentioned earlier, the glossary of the terms. I find it beneficial, and I read through it myself just to refresh my memory sometimes because they aren't necessarily terms you would use every day. So our next steps are steps we have right now. We're providing the board with an overview of the emergency operation plan. Yes, it's in draft. We do have, and we have identified a few more things that we do need to tweak before it is rolled out. And that's one of those requirements that we do show that the board has been informed and notified that we do have the plan. Tabletop exercise, Dr. Eskamia talked about that. The entire incident command, incident management team participated in the tabletop. And this week, we also have a follow-up meeting to that tabletop exercise that we can kind of do a debrief. What did we learn? What did we do well? What can we do better? And that will also play around a few more things that we do need to add to the plan, like, for example, we need to add some information about establishing Emergency Operations Center, where we need some of these key people on this team to go, if they're able to, during an incident, right after an incident. So we have, the exercise did help us identify a few things that we do need to, to add to our plan. And then, as I mentioned, we will have a promulgation statement that Dr. Eskamia will sign. Once he signs, that means go. So once we get the draft, the document out of draft form, then we'll have him initiate that document. And then, honor before October 25th, we will submit the revised emergency operations plan to the Texas, Texas School Safety Center. And before the 25th, we will distribute it to the employees in the college community by email. It will have a link to our, our shared documents that we provide to our employees, that they can go to the document. And we will also have it included as part of our new employee orientation packet when we have new employees come in to make sure we catch them early. We'll also put it in onboarding follow-up for new employees. And we will begin to engage the various employee council groups to start talking about the plan with them, making sure that they're aware of it. And those are just some ways. I do know that, I did get a request from College Relations about the newsletter going out, I think week after next. So I think this will be a great opportunity to put in the newsletter about, be watching for, you know, tell employees, be watching for this, make sure you read through it. So I think that, that'll be another opportunity to communicate. We will continue to review the plan and make revisions as needed. And just as a side note, we are working on, I'm going to, because this is more for college operations and employees and our roles and what we do. We are working on, I'm going to call it an informational instructions fact sheet for students. I've been talking to AVP Sanders. And so it will be something kind of like instructions. In the event something happens, this is your responsibility, student. You need to, you need to make sure you're signed up for the alert system, follow the instructions on the alert. In part of getting ready for that, we do have safety and security videos that they can watch, which the Student Service Team pushes out every semester and then they make that available at orientation. So we are working on another layer, which will be something very short, specific for instructions for students. Any questions?
Mark, I just wanted to add that another thing you can say to them is that, in addition to being hurricane-prone, we're also the headquarters for Naval Aviation Training. And the checklist is aviate, navigate, communicate, because you're not supposed to crash the plane while you're trying to tell the ground what's going on. The first step is to not crash the plane, so.
What's our analogy?
That's our advice, is, you know, let the guy who's flying not crash the plane or gal.
And then communicate.
And wait until they're not crashing to communicate. Yeah.
Does the Texas Safe, School Safety Center require an annual update to this plan? What is the, what's the ongoing process for this plan?
Yes, ma'am. It's annually, the, the first time we were required, the mandate to submit was that January '22. But it is going to be annually. And then annually, they do let you know, there are certain sections of your plan that I'm going to say, for the lack of a better word, because we have our auditors here, that that center will audit. And they let you know if you're chosen for any particular part of your plan to be under review by a, by a group for that year. So I know we were notified, but we're not in any particular group to have any one item looked at. But, so when we submit in October, if they follow the same timeline they did last year, maybe December we'll have our letter back. And like I said, they either tell us we're, you know, we're compliant, or they don't need any, if they say you don't, they don't need any additional information, that means you have, you've provided them with what you're required to. They may make some recommendations. It says, although not required, you may want to look at doing this. So it just depends on the volume and how long and their staff takes. So I don't expect any response back before December, and it could be after December.
And then my last question is related to our policies. As a result of this work over the last couple of years, is there anything that is inconsistent with our policies? And do we need any policy changes related to what you've now established in, in the plan here?
Yes, ma'am. Great question. Yes, there will be some policy work. We do have as part of our, and you'll see it when Weaver reps come up, that it's, we have an advisory on safety and security. And part of what I have asked them to do in that advisory work for safety and security is to help us with an overall emergency management policy for the college. And then some of the, the procedures we have, because what we have under, under these types of incidents in our manual right now are all A, which are procedures. All of those need to be removed. We'll come to you with that recommendation once we do the policy work with Dan and company because they're outdated. We just, we really want to use the plan, the EOP, as a source document and point back to it, instead of having it regurgitated in five locations and then you have to go and change all of those locations. So we just want to point back to a source document. So yes, ma'am, there will be policy work coming.
Any other questions from any other board members? Thank you all. I know this is significant work. It, I, I do, we do it on behalf of clients, and so I know the, the work that goes into this, so congratulations on this.
Thank you. Thank you to the team and to everyone that's involved with the management team of the college. They've been very helpful and resourceful and supportive.
Thank you. Next on our staff reports is our annual safety and security report, titled our CLIRI Report. Ms. McDonald?
Yes, thank you. Everyone was provided, I believe you should find your place, the, the new report, hold off the presses. So you will have this report. I will ask Chief White to come and provide you the, the statistic information as part of this Gene Clear Disclosure of Campus Security Policy and Campus Crime Statistic Act, which is CLIRI, we call it CLIRI. It's a federal mandate requiring all institutions of higher ed that participate in federal student financial aid programs to make known crimes occurring on the campus and in the surrounding community. The CLIRI Act is enforced by the U.S. Department of Education. So I'm going to let Chief White appear and provide you with that annual report.
Good afternoon. As Ms. McDonald said, the annual safety and security report is required by law. To be compliant with the law, known as the CLIRI Act, all post-secondary institutions participating in the title for financial assistance or student financial assistance programs must disclose their crime statistics. programs must disclose their crime statistics, along with other safety and security information to the public and students by October 1st of each year. You will find in the report, your stats begin on page 19, and it shows all reportable crimes for the last three years at all locations that we consider to be campuses. One note to it is, however, Oso Creek has been added, but you only have stats for 2022. I know there's a little, sometimes confusion because the stats are running the year behind. And the statistical stats for the CLIRI report run from January 1st to December 31st. Instead of running a school year, they run the annual year. The majority of the crimes reported on campus, I can assure you, do not involve our students, our faculty, or staff. And we want to also assure you that the report has been submitted as required. So we've met our deadline requirement, and Dean Hernandez has reported it to the Department of Education, which is another part, and we have that certificate as well, another part of the program. I want to thank the CLIRI Compliance Committee that helped put the report together and open it up for any questions that you all might have.
Any questions for Chief White? Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Well, now move on to our pending business list. In November, we've got a number of reports due, our annual tax abatement review, we'll see our enrollment report. And then in December, look at the state, the Higher Education Coordinating Board Strategic Plan and how that relates to the work we're doing and fold that in, how that folds into our work. And then foundation update, and begin to look at student charges for the next fiscal year. Please note, I also have a policy review. We'll be looking at that schedule and determining what's happening for the next year. Please note that we do not plan to have a January board meeting. We could potentially have a called meeting if there's something that has to happen between December and February, but at this point in time, we do not plan to have a January board meeting. Any questions on our pending item list? If not, we'll move on to our consent agenda. We have documents in the consent agenda related to approval of minutes. That's actually the only thing, is do they, do any of those minutes need to be pulled for separate consideration? Seeing none, is there a motion to adopt the consent agenda as presented? Thank you, Mr. Garza, second by Mr. Loeb. Any discussion? Is there any public comment on the consent agenda? Seeing none, others in favor, please raise your hand. Any opposed, same sign, that motion passes unanimously. We are going to go into our regular agenda item, and the first one is related to internal audits. I will let folks know, we're gonna do a portion of this in open session, and then we'll have a brief closed session to receive some information on security audits, so that we'll take that immediately following the open, the open session discussion. Did I say that right? Ms. McDonald?
Thank you. As part of the internal audit process for board review and acceptance, the following information will be presented by Daniel Graves and Brandon Tenos, partners with Weaver. They will provide reports and status updates for purchasing, bursar's office, and advisory for safety and security, advisory for construction management. And as the chair mentioned, there will be a follow-up to the audit for IT security that will be in closed session. We will also provide you with the proposed FY24 internal audit plan, and then the internal audit FY23 annual report that we're required to present to the board and then file with the state auditor's office by November 1st. The Board of Regents Audit Committee met on September the 20th. Dan Graves with Weaver was present and reviewed internal audit reports and status information with the Board Audit Committee. So I'd like to call Dan and Brandon up.
There you go. Thank you.
Thank you, Tammy. Good afternoon. As Tammy said, we are here to present our internal audit update for, this is our last update for the fiscal 2023 audit activity. So with that, we do have our, our purchasing follow-up report, the bursar's audit status, actually, the report for that, the safety and security status, construction management status, and then in closed session, we'll provide the details on the report for the information security follow-up procedures. That is because the Texas Open Meetings Act does have an exemption for IT security issues, and so we'll present those to you in closed session. Brandon performed and was in charge of the procedures, the follow-up over purchasing, so I'll, him review those with you first, and then I'll go over the rest of the agenda with you.
Thank you, Dan. Good afternoon, Regents. It's a pleasure to present the status of the purchasing follow-up. To provide a little high level, the purchasing internal audit was performed in 2022, and we performed follow-up procedures this fiscal year that we are just now closing out. There was three findings that were identified in that 2022 report. We worked with management this summer to evaluate the status, and happy to say that significant progress was made and diligence of that purchasing management to close out those three findings. And so all three of those are remediated as of today. And so we're gonna quickly go over that. Again, there was three findings, one moderate and two low. The first one was over vendor performance monitoring. We've identified that processes and procedures were developed for all three of these areas, specifically on the vendor monitoring, and implemented those and started receipt, putting those out to vendors internally to evaluate and assess performance and document those. Finding two was really evaluating informal, serial, sequential, and split purchasing monitoring to make sure we're not bypassing controls, internal processes within purchasing are being done and evaluated on a routine basis to make sure those controls are not bypassed. And also vendor file completion, make sure all the files were there. Again, this was more of an internal checklist that we saw in just a few, one, two cases where they did not have that. We're making sure processes are in, in place to, that all those files and forms are included. And so, again, all these are remediated. We also worked with management in kind of an advisory capacity to provide some recommendations on further enhancement to some of the processes implemented for their consideration. Again, all were remediated, and future performance will also be assessed with the new ERP when that gets rolled out to see where they can further automate for efficiencies and effectiveness, where it's just hindered right now with the current system. So any questions on the purchasing follow-up? All right, I'll turn it back over to Dan. Thank you.
Thanks, Brandon. So we did perform and complete our internal audit over the bursar's office activities and processes. That was our last significant audit for fiscal year 2023. We began that work in the fiscal year, finished it up just after. Our coverage period for that audit was from October 1st, 2021, through March 31st, 2023. So a pretty large covered, coverage period of activity. Overall, our report received a satisfactory rating. If you recall and look at the, the Nixon, the, the report that you've got, we have three ratings, strong, satisfactory, and unsatisfactory. This report received a satisfactory rating. The scope of our audit procedures really encompassed everything that the bursar's office does, all the way from receiving cash and payments on a daily basis through either cash, check, credit card, really with the, the cash handling, over to posting payments and remittances to student accounts, reconciling the point-of-sale system on a daily basis, and then any sort of charges, discounts apply to student accounts, any refunding of financial aid payments out to students, and then ultimately reconciling cash receivables. There were six findings. Each one of our objectives, objective A being the design of internal controls over the process, objective B being the effectiveness of those execution, and objective C being user access within Colleague and TouchNet. Each received a satisfactory rating. We did have those, the six findings across those three areas. First of those findings being really consistent cashiering standard operating procedures. So what we found was there are lot, there were quite a bit of standard operating procedures for each of the cashiering offices. When we looked at those, they were all a little bit different location to location. They weren't in a unified policy applicable to all cashiers. And then ultimately, we didn't have evidence that those were reviewed and approved by college management. So our recommendation was to update those and consolidate, have a standard set of operating procedures, accounting for small variances from office to office where different types of transactions might need to be recorded, maybe different amounts in cash boxes, those sorts of, of smaller variances, but then have a, having a unified set of policies that are then applicable and reviewed and approved on an annual basis. Management responded to that, and their response is included in the report. They've agreed to review and revise the standard operating procedures and republish those. Finding two, and that, that finding really encompasses and sort of affects all the rest because several of these findings are all about documentation. All, if you've gone through the report and read the report, we didn't have any glaring errors, any glaring financial mismanagement, but we did have small documentation errors throughout, and that's what really all the six findings are about. This finding two, inconsistent cash reconciliation review. So that's really inconsistent evidence of review that the daily cash recons were performed. So each cashier performs a reconciliation of the cash box. We expect to have that reconciliation documented and someone review as a double check. Really, there was inconsistent evidence of that review. Management agreed to revise that policy as part of the SOP updates, not policy procedure update. Sorry, I know you guys review policy, they have procedure. So of those procedures, they've agreed to update those and republish those so that that is clear of what the expectations are for review. The same with the daily cash, check, and deposit procedures. Again, there was inconsistent evidence. You see for 21 of the 25 samples that we tested, there was no evidence or review of someone other than the preparer. That is already required in the SOPs. There was just inconsistent evidence of that. Again, the revision of the SOPs, the recommunication of those should address that issue, and that's what management has agreed to. Finding four about the authorization of tuition waivers and exemptions. There was just no documentation provided for us. Again, this was one that we didn't find any waivers or exemptions that should not have been granted. We just didn't find evidence that they were approved prior to being granted. So when we, we did our testing, we did find evidence of, of that support, so everything was valid. However, our expectation would be that before a student gets an exemption or waiver applied to their account, that there would be some sort of review and approval procedure. There was none. Management, when we identified this in the field, we asked the questions about these 20 and 25 samples that we tested. They recognized and actually addressed that issue while we were in the field. And what they did was they, instead of, because of the volume of exemptions that are granted, that rather than having some individual review and approval procedure that would have to happen for every student for every term, they chosen to restrict the access to a certain group of supervisors who can then apply those to student accounts. So it's a very limited set of people who can do that, and they, they know the expectation. It's a, it's an elevated authorization, so it's elevated to supervisors and not just any cashier, and they will review and ensure that those waivers are applicable before being applied. So management's already addressed this. However, we did include it in the report because it was a condition, condition that existed at the time of our audit procedures.
So, so you're saying the students, there are some that are lifelong, so once you get that exemption or waiver, it's gonna be applied?
Correct.
But some are conditional based on the student's temporary status? I guess I'm trying to understand the difference between how you're applying what you just talked about.
The difference is, is that the system requires you to update that exemption every term. So most exemptions, once you get them, maybe a veteran's exemption or for different, the state grants them for different things, adoptions, blindness, et cetera, that they have to be reinput every term. So it's not like you can put it on once on the student status with the current colleague system, you have to actually do that every term once the registrations are complete. And so because of that volume, restricting that to only certain individuals prevents having to have some arduous review, approval, sign-off type of procedure for every time that that's applied. So there's not really any differences. The difference is you have to reapply it every term, unfortunately, with the current system.
I'm just concerned about our students, veterans, somebody with disabilities, that again has a standing exemption or waiver, having to go through that every semester is a burden to those students. And so is, is there a way to those that are, are, again, permanently granted, to have those approved without the student having to do it every semester? That's not your question, I guess.
No, it's.
That's an operational question.
It really is. And Ali and Patricia.
I don't know if, if, some, that there's some statute of law that requires us to get this documentation every term or every year. I know just like with FERPA, and that's not related to this, but FERPA, we have students, like we'll have a dual credit student that, that will file FERPA form, and we require that every year for, for as long as they're here. So I'll have to go back and find those exemptions.
I just think to avoid bureaucracy and paperwork, cumbersome semester after semester on behalf of our students would be a good thing to do.
And that's definitely something to look into is the, the new implementation of the new ERP, right? It may just be a system limitation, and unfortunately, you just have to update it with the new ERP.
I apologize.
No, no, it's perfectly fine. Finding five, another documentation over past due follow-ups. And so really, this was centered around, what we identified was that for dual enrollment tuition, where there were past due amounts owed to the college, we identified that there were procedures in place to follow up on those amounts and, you know, try and, you know, efforts to get them paid. What we identified, there was some inconsistency in the files of how it was documented based on who performed the follow-up and what the results were. And so, again, recommendation to have some, some standardized procedures as part of those follow-ups, and that should be addressed in the new SOPs. On finding six, the bank account and credit card reconciliation review and support. So we found a couple of different things with credit card reconciliations. One of the items that we found was just, we, our expectation is on any account reconciliation that it's reviewed, it's performed and reviewed within 30 days of the, the prior period end, so we'll give them a month. We realized transactions come in, and there's a little bit of time needed to, to maybe research and identify, review those. We found two that didn't, that weren't reviewed within the 30 days. They were reconciled within the 30 days, it's just the review happened after that. And then on four of the reconciliations that we looked at, there were some reconciling items that didn't have supporting documentation attached to the reconciliations. We had to dig and do some research, and so we're recommending that the, the support is provided to the reviewer for those. And then one on the cash reconciliations, we identified where an account was reconciled and reviewed within the 30-day period, but because of accounting adjustments that were made after that reconciliation had been performed and reviewed, it had to be reperformed quite some time later. And so our recommendation is for that, based on just basic internal controls, is to not allow adjustments to be posted to prior periods as a policy or, or practice. And so management has actually responded to those and agreed to, again, address the documentation issues through the standard operating procedures again, then also to implement a procedure whereby accounting adjustments are no longer booked to prior periods unless there's a compliance reason for those. For instance, maybe grants and having some specific requirements to make sure that those accounting transactions are booked in the proper period of when they occurred. So if it comes in late, maybe reopening and allowing that adjustment to be posted to that prior period. But this will make sure that the accounting reconciliations are performed or valid and that no adjustments affect, you know, the, the differences in the account reconciliation. So those new adjustments will be looked to the prior or to the current period, and that should help remediate that issue. We did have one finding, finding, we don't have it listed on here, but in the report, you'll note that for objective C, the user access, we have identified and identified in prior audits that user access isn't periodically reviewed. Because that was already previously identified in other audits, mainly some IT audits that we have performed, we didn't feel it appropriate to list it twice in here and sort of double ding, but I did want to highlight that for you is that we do have that finding. That's why there's a satisfactory, not a strong rating for that objective. That's why there's a satisfactory, not a strong rating for that objective. However, we didn't feel it was appropriate to list it twice and sort of double count. So I just wanted to make you aware of that. Any other questions over the Bursar's Office Report? If none, our advisory consultation over safety and security. So we had, previously had that booked and scheduled for fiscal year 2023. We've updated you a few times now on just the status of the office, the preparedness, and really being ready for us to come perform those procedures. So we have rescheduled those into fiscal year 24. You'll see that on our proposed plan that we presented to the Audit Committee. With that, you'll see that we have submitted our document request list, we're in, we've had our planning meetings, and we plan to begin fieldwork this month on those different procedures and begin those advisory procedures again. And Tammy has, you know, just recently briefed you on some of the additional advisory work that we'll be doing there with the safety and security procedures. Our construction management advisory consultation, we have completed those. We'd hope to have the report completed and ready to present to you now for this meeting. Unfortunately, that, we didn't get that done and through the reporting cycle in time, but we did assist the college in updating all the standard operating procedures for the construction management, and those will address all eight findings from the fiscal 2022 audit. And those procedures to perform the actual follow-ups now that the SOPs are drafted will be, or are on the fiscal 24 plan. As far as our information security, again, because of the open meetings exemption, we won't discuss those details here, but I can present an open session that progress was made towards all the findings that were open as part of that information security audit that we performed, and we do have a few left that we will perform as part of our fiscal year 2024 proposed audit plan. And then our audit plan for this year, for fiscal 2024, you'll see our rescheduled safety and security audit. Because we moved that one from fiscal 23 into 24, we didn't have enough room in the plan for all the audits that were on our 24 plan, so just wanted to present to you, we're recommending that the database administration and ERP audit get moved to fiscal 25. That also helps with the timing of all the implementation of the new ERP. We can perform that audit once the installation of the new ERP is further along, and so that it's a good timing shift for that one. The rest of the audits we have are the AP Financial Aid, which we have previously audited, and then an area that we have never audited before for Delmar is the institutional research and reporting, along with all the follow-ups of all the open items, and then our annual reporting requirements, which is risk assessment update and the annual internal audit plan. So any questions over the proposed plan for fiscal 24?
Can I say something real quick? Regent Scott, on your question regarding the veterans, I don't know how this escaped me, but I'm currently going to school under my husband's Veterans Education Benefits, and I do have to apply for, as a dependent, for those veteran benefits every term because it is a rule from the VA. Students that go to school, whether at a University or community college, come to the college under different chapters, you know, chapter 30, chapter 35, chapter 33. And so the VA monitors your GPA, your degree plan, if you're taking repeated courses. So there are strict rules regarding the VA. So that's why veterans and veterans of dependents have to submit that paperwork every term.
Thank you very much. The last report that you have in your packet is the annual internal audit report. So this is a statutory report that we're required to complete. The contents of this report aren't chosen by us, they're dictated by the State Auditor's Office. And so those have specific sections. One is just a compliance confirmation with Texas Government Code. The next section is our plan for 2023, the results of that plan, and any consulting or non-audit services completed. So the one we did disclose this year was the consulting services we provided over the construction management. So that is something that's a little bit different than maybe you've seen before in other annual reports that we presented. We also have our external quality assurance review, so that is the audit of your auditors. And so that's the audit report by another firm as part of the Texas CPA requirements. We have a peer review every three years. That's our most recent peer review report. We did receive the highest rating of pass. You'll see that in the very last paragraph of that letter. Then the next few sections are the fiscal plan for 2024, which I've just presented, the disclosure of who your external auditor is, and then a disclosure on fraud, waste, and abuse and how that's handled and reported within the college. Any questions on the annual report?
Are there any questions on the information provided thus far? If not, then the board is going to go into closed session under Texas Government Code 551.076 regarding security devices or audits, and Texas Government Code 551.089 regarding security devices and audits, and the time is 2:55 PM. All right, ladies and gentlemen, the board has come back from closed session at 3:17 PM. Mr. Garza, do you have a motion coming out of closed session?
Yes, I do. The Audit Committee met on September 20th, and they made a recommendation to approve the internal audits, recommendations, and plans for next year. So again, I move that we accept the internal auditor's report and recommendations for the plan for next year.
Thank you so much. Motion to accept the report and the proposed plan for fiscal year 24. Is there a second to that motion?
Second.
Second by Dr. Adami. Any discussion on that motion? Is there any public comment on that motion to accept the report as presented? Seeing none, all those in favor, please raise your hand. Any opposed, same sign, that motion passes unanimously. Thank you, gentlemen, very much. Now we're going to move on to item number three, which is discussion and possible action related to our Bachelor's of Applied Science Degree in Organizational Management and Leadership. Dr. Halcom.
Thank you. Madam Chair Regents and Dr. Eskamia, at the April and September 2023 Board Meetings, we presented a proposal for a new Bachelor's of Applied Science Degree in Organizational Leadership and Management. That presentation is in your packet of information with some additions. We will not go through each and every slide, but we will provide you a little bit of a summary and especially show you the slides in response to a request from the September meeting where we've added new information on mapping and illustrating the pathway for students beginning at our college seeking an associate degree and then progressing to the Bachelor of Applied Science Degree. Dean Merrill will discuss this shortly, those pathways. First, Dr. Schromach, who has worked diligently on this proposal, is here to give a brief summary of the BAS degree.
Good afternoon. We're pleased to be here again in front of you for this proposal. So the proposed Bachelor of Applied Science Degree in Organizational Management and Leadership provides students with associates and applied science degrees and opportunity to complete a baccalaureate degree in a targeted occupation at Delmar College. The targeted implementation date of the proposed degree is fall of 2024. Delmar College has approximately 55 associates of applied science degrees that can be stackable into the proposed Bachelor's of Applied Science in Organizational Management and Leadership, which gives students added business knowledge to complement the technical skills that they learned in their AAS degrees. Students completing an AAS degree usually take 15 semester credit hours of general education courses plus 45 semester credit hours of technical courses. With the addition of the proposed BAS OML degree, they would take an additional 27 semester credit hours of general education classes to complete their 42 hours of required core plus 33 semester credit hours in BAS OML major courses in areas such as marketing, management, accounting, ethics, and finance. That would bring the total semester credit hours for the BAS OML to 120 semester credit hours. An important aspect of the BAS OML, this shows your 55 AAS degrees, an important aspect of the BAS OML is the ability to create opportunities for economic mobility for our students. Dean Merrill will discuss how the BAS OML will be beneficial in creating pathways for career advancement in three of his programs.
Good afternoon. To understand the value of the BAS OML degree and how it can advance a career pathway, we have selected three programs from the Division of Industry and Public Service to show potential for income when continuing beyond the AAS degree is now an option. In public service, cadet candidates in the fire and police academies are not required to have completed an AAS or bachelor's degree, but it is preferred. The goal at this stage is completion of the licensure and crosswalk to academic credit. Certified firefighters and police officers or sheriff department deputies with three to five years of service have an income range of $57,000 to $80,000, depending on experience, education, or assignment. This is considered entry to mid-level. Promotion to the rank of lieutenant or captain as mid-level supervisors increases the income range to $81,000 to $103,000, but also requires advanced licensure and/or an AAS degree. At the executive level position such as a fire chief or police chief, income ranges increase to $99,000 to $155,000 and require 10 to 15 years of experience, advanced or master level certification, and a bachelor's degree is required and a master's degree is preferred. The next program is process technology. We will look at the same increases based on entry, experience, supervision, and education. To begin, we review compensation for entry-level plant operators. These employees have a pay range of $77,000 to $99,000 with a Level 1 or Level 2 certification. Next, at the supervisory level, the employee must have five to seven years of experience and an AAS degree or preferably a bachelor's degree, and the pay increases to a range of $81,000 to $131,000 based on assignment or shift. Upon reaching plant manager designation, a bachelor's degree is required and a master's degree is preferred, along with 10 to 15 years' experience and predetermined KSA's such as engineer, chemistry, biology, or business experience at the executive level. The compensation range is $178,000 to $241,000. It was noted that the range does not include total cash compensation such as annual incentives, bonuses, profit sharing, or stock options. And the last one, the next program is welding. Compensation at the entry level is valued at $45,000 to $74,000 when an employee has a Level 1 or Level 2 certification. An AAS degree is not required, but always preferred. At the foreman supervisor level, the income ranges from $49,000 to $90,000, and an AAS degree may be required, but experience is mandatory along with specialization and skills. The highest income levels require a status as rig welder or owner-operator. Rig welders and owner-operators are typically standalone enterprises and have vast experience and knowledge of specific welding operations and may employ numerous welders. In this position, the income levels range from $85,000 to $150,000, and the combination of experience, supervision, and education is extremely valuable. The AAS and bachelor's degree are required with specific employers, along with extensive experience and management for scope of work. In closing, it should be noted, these three programs are only a fraction of the programs that would benefit from the BAS OML degree. By giving students the opportunity to continue their education and complete a bachelor's degree from Delmar College, each student will be on a pathway to education, career advancement, and increased earning potential. Thank you.
Thank you, Dean Merrill. So you can see the value of offering a bachelor's degree here for our students who are especially taking those technical skills courses. One other thing that is different in your packet from previous presentations is the budget, and I want to point that out. Everything else is similar. We had some calculations done that would include the House Bill 8. There is a slight difference of about, I think, $35,000 from the last presentation. But you can see the net revenue is very good, and the net difference is significant for what we've estimated. Other than that, there are no differences in the presentation from last month. So in summary, this degree is expected to serve our community and current students of Delmar College to achieve their education and career goals. The curriculum was designed after conducting extensive research in reviewing other Texas community colleges who offer the degree and collaborating with workforce advisory committees. And they helped to determine, do we need this degree? And they agreed that we do. In addition, surveys from students, administrators, and faculty helped determine the need to establish the BAS OML degree. A group of individuals worked diligently to prepare the proposal over the last year and a half to two years, and I would like to recognize them. Some people may have already left, but of course, Dean Merrill, Dean Schromach have been very essential in this. Who else is here? I think Dan, you were involved, Chip Campbell, Chair of the Business Department, very engaged, and Bradley Norquist. And they all worked very hard with the committees and in preparation of this. I do want to thank them for this. So I do want to thank your time today and all the time you've taken to analyze this proposal. So if there are not any questions, I would like to ask Madam Chair if, or I would like to recommend to Madam Chair that the addition of the new Bachelor's in Applied Science Degree in Organizational Management and Leadership be approved with an effective date of fall of 2024.
Thank you so much, Dr. Halcom. So the chair would entertain that motion? Dr. Adami beat you to it, Mr. Kelly makes a second. In terms of discussion, so our adoption of this today means that you then have the authorization to go to the coordinating board-
Yes.
-as well as SAC COC-
Yes.
-for there, for those approvals.
Yes, I can't go to the coordinating board unless the Board of Regents does approve this first.
Are there questions or comments for Dr. Halcom? As we said at the last meeting, we were, we would have eagerly anticipated an action last month, so we're glad that you brought it back very quickly and answered the few questions that we have. I've had interesting conversations with folks over the last month talking about our Bachelor's Degree in Nursing, talking about this pending Bachelor's Degree in Organizational Management and Leadership, and the cooperative agreement with Texas Tech to do a Bachelor's Program in Architecture. And jaws dropping is probably an interesting way to describe it. Folks are like, I didn't know y'all did that. So I'm so excited that we are looking at elevating these programs for our students and for the community and looking for the opportunity to continue to serve our current and past students in helping them further their career and educational goals. So kudos to all of you for working hard on this project. Is there any public comment on this item? Seeing none, all those in favor of approval of the organizational management and leadership degree program, please raise your hand. Any opposed, same sign, that motion passes unanimously. Thank you very much for your hard work.
Well, thank you so much. We appreciate it.
Yeah. We have a lot of good news today, lots of applause today. Mr. Strabos is going to present our next action item, which is a discussion on amendment to our interlocal agreement between Delmar College and the City of Corpus Christi.
We have a current interlocal agreement with the City of Corpus Christi for a police training academy. It's the City of Corpus Christi Training Academy. And they're leasing nine acres. It's a long-term lease, it's 50 acres with an option for another, 59 acres for another 50 years. So this is the same interlocal contract, this is amendment number two. The city wishes to lease five acres, and they'll build a police substation on it. And again, the same terms apply to that. But in addition, there's 1.2 acres at the intersection of Rodfield Road and Yorktown Road, and they'll lease that to Delmar- Road, and they'll lease that to Delmar College for the same terms of that. Questions coming?
I have a related question.
Yes.
I've also heard, you know, I think this is great, when they first came up with the idea of doing the academy, I said, let's put it, you know, with Delmar. There's also an opportunity, I think, they're contemplating either renovating or relocating development services, and they have the cash to do it. And some of the development services folks mentioned that in other communities, they have co-located development services with the small business development centers and things like that. And so it might, I think it might be worth us looking at, do we have some parking lot space here, which I think the answer is yes, and, you know, do they have interest in building a new building here rather than spending $10 million trying to renovate their old one?
Yes, sir.
All right, thanks.
Are there other questions? Mr. Krul?
Pull up the exhibit on the other side, the second side.
Yes, sir. This is it. So on your left-hand side is the fitness trail going up towards the top of the screen. And so that marks the edge of Delmar's property. And at the bottom is the Billwett Park.
So this, this track goes all the way to the fitness trail slash drainage ditch back there? No?
No, it does not go all the way to drainage ditch. No, sir, it does not.
The trail does.
The trail goes all the way to the drainage ditch. But the property does not. The lease does not.
The trail goes to the bridge.
The trail leads to the pedestrian bridge, which crosses the-
Right, yeah. Okay.
So you see at the bottom right identifies the new police training academy, and in between them is the bus stop that's operational.
That answer your question, Mr. Krul? Do you have more?
I had a conversation with President Eskimilla yesterday about this, and he answered most of my questions.
Are there any other questions? We ready to, does anybody need any information on the agreement itself? We're good? Okay. Is there a motion to approve the amendment to the interlocal agreement?
So moved.
Thank you, Mr. Loeb. Is there a second? Second by Mr. Krul. Any other discussion? Is there any public comment on this item? Seeing none, all those in favor of approving the amendment, please raise your hand. Any opposed, same sign. That motion passes. Thank you. Also then, Mr. Strabos, you're going to talk about an annexation issue on London Pirate Road.
So in cooperation with the City of Corpus Christi has already annexed this parcel. So as part of our procedures that when the City of Corpus Christi annexes property, that Delmar College can do that in accordance with Texas Education Code, Section 130 606, 066. And I've worked with legal counsel on this, and it's in accordance with our normal rules and procedures, as well as the state law. And so you do have some additional background walking through. There were some questions previously about when these land is over, is annexed, how does that impact our students? And so we've gotten some demographic data that kind of shows that in general, these are lightly populated areas today, and even talking about five years to develop. And so what it does mean long-term, there will be some students who are in district and paying in-district tuition, and some students who are out of district paying out-of-district tuition. But this is a growing part of the community, and the city keeps, continues to annex it, and we continue to follow them with that.
Are there questions for Mr. Strabos on this item?
My question is just a comment. This particular development is called a Gopi Ranch, and it's associated with some group that provides housing for foster care and so on. So I would imagine that that's going to develop fairly rapidly. The other comment I have is there are two, possibly three, maybe four more parcels out in this area that the city is annexing, is, or the annexation is in process. In fact, I think one of them is done off south of 2444, over by the water, ground storage tank.
So Mr. Rivera, who on staff is, watches those annexations to bring us forward? Do you and Mr. Strabos both do that? How's that work?
They provide us with notification now.
Gotcha.
They weren't for a while. They kind of fell off, but now they're back on track, and Mr. Strabos keeps track of that, and so do I. Timing's important here, right?
You bring them forward as, as the city annexes, you bring them forward, Dustin, in the months following that?
Yeah, I would just say that the process has changed a lot where it used to be the city would kind of every five or 10 years annex a big chunk, and now it is more individual parcel as things develop because the city, the city's annexation powers have been lessened, but they are able to use access to water supply to induce property developers to be voluntarily annexed. And so it's more on a neighborhood-by-neighborhood as they are being developed basis. And so I think we just need to have a general policy that we're going to annex whatever they annex, and then as they come up, staff can just bring it to us. Because, I mean, I don't, whatever you think of it in terms of the wisdom of the city annexing it, it doesn't create any additional cost for us.
Right.
So, yeah, we should just automatically do it.
Yep. But it does take, we can't do a blanket, we have to do it.
Right. So it's, yeah, it's going to look like neighborhood-by-neighborhood, and so it's probably going to be like, you know, every quarter we annex some random neighborhood-
It's going to be a checkerboard annexation, basically.
Yeah.
Where some, some developments out here will not want to annex, and others will, so.
So Chair will entertain a motion to annex the property as described, or as annexed by the City of Corpus Christi? Is there a motion?
So moved.
Thank you, Mr. Loeb. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Mr. Krul. Any other discussion on that item? Is there any public comment on this item? Seeing none, all those in favor, please raise your hand. Any opposed, same sign. That motion passes unanimously. Thank you, Mr. Strabos.
Thank you.
Just another sidebar, has there been any discussion with London ISD about annexing London ISD into our service area?
There has been discussions. It's been a few months now since I've sat down with the superintendent. Dr. Whittig and I had lunch a while back. That specifically was not, was not mentioned. I think the scenario that we're seeing today was more about the development of her district as she saw it from a superintendent's standpoint. So that's, that's the best answer I can give you at this point.
Thank you, sir. All right. Item number six is the college's quarterly financial statement. Mr. Garcia?
Yes, sir. Good afternoon, Madam Chair, Mr. President, and members of the Board of Trustees. So today's fourth quarter financial presentation is subject to change based on the results of this year's financial audit to be performed, or currently being performed, by Collier, Johnson, and Woods. The auditors have been on site for a couple of weeks, with a plan to complete the audit by mid or end of November, followed by their annual financial audit presentation at the December's board meeting. So in general, the college is on track with ending the year in accordance with the fiscal year 2023 planned budget. The reported state funding revenues valued at $23.7 million is slightly above the planned budget of $23.5 million. The reported other revenues valued at $91.1 million is slightly below the planned budget of $91.2 million. This is attributed to the strong performance in our investments, driven by prudent investment strategies and the tax settlement with Flint Hills, offset by reduced tuition and fees stemming from the effects of the pandemic. Bidding to the college's operating expenses, the reported salaries and benefits valued at $82 million is below the planned budget of $85.4 million. The reduced spending for this category valued at $3.4 million is driven by the operating results of the exempt and non-exempt salary expense categories. The reported non-salary expense category valued at $26.9 million is below the planned budget of $27.6 million. This reduced spending for this category valued at $700,000 is based, or is driven by reduced spending in supplies, equipment, offset by computer software and insurance expense. Next is contingency with a planned budget of $1.7 million, of which $1.2 million was used for the one-time payment to employees. The action was approved by the board at the August 29, 2023 board meeting. Before we transition to the balance sheet on the next slide, I want to point out the college's monthly burn rate. Based on this year's annual salary and non-expense, and non-salary expense, the college spends, on the average, about $9 million a month. So I'm going to circle back to this last data point when discussing cash and investments on the next slide. Are there any questions? Okay. All right. So the college remains on solid footing to weather most business interruptions with a cash and investment position of $58.7 million. This is sufficient enough to pay the college's estimated current obligations valued at $15.8 million. In addition, in light of-
You got it wrong. There you go. Thank you.
Okay. Thank you. Sorry about that. I don't have to repeat myself, right? I think we got it. We got, we got cash in the bank. But in light of recent media coverage about federal government shutdown, this next point speaks to the college's financial agility. Earlier, I mentioned that our average monthly burn rate is about $9 million. And so with the reported cash and investment position of the $58.7 million, the college can continue to operate for slightly more than six months without a single source of funding, so we're in very good shape. Transitioning to the liability section of the balance sheet, the college's obligation as of August 2023 valued at $117.3 million improved significantly relative to the previous year's obligations valued at $131.5 million. This is attributed in part to the reduction in the net pension and OPAP liability and deferred inflows related to pension and other post-employee benefit obligations and accounts payable. Moving on to the next, to the net position unrestricted. The college's financial condition as of August valued at $42.2 million relative to the previous year's balance of $51.2 million significantly improved. This improvement is attributed to this year's positive operating results reported under the category of current year income and excess of expenses. In addition to that, it's also attributed to the net pension and OPAP fund balance categories. The current year's income and excess of expense will be transferred and tracked in the plant fund in the fiscal year 2024. Madam Chair, Mr. President, members of the board, this concludes my presentation. Are there any questions?
Any questions for Mr. Garcia? No? Is there a motion to accept the financial statement as presented? Thank you, Mr. Garcia. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Ms. Abert.
Thank you.
Any discussion? Is there any public comment on this motion? Seeing none, all those in favor, please raise your hand. Any opposed, same sign. That motion carries.
Thank you.
Thank you. Lastly, we have a discussion and possible action related to Aransas County's proposal to assign the U.S. EDA grant to transfer the Workforce Development Center to Delmar College. Ms. Keys?
Yes, good afternoon, Regents, and thank you again for seeing me regarding this topic. This is going to be a summary, basically, of what we discussed last month. Moving forward, and I'm going to give an abbreviated discussion, so please feel free to stop me if there are additional questions at any point in time. As you know, it's been a summary over the last two years, working together with Aransas County leadership and their Economic Development Corporation Group in the community in Aransas County. This also started with a study by Texas A&amp;M University that looked at the needs of the community and thoroughly surveyed their needs, and it was a strong voice of the community asking for a Workforce Development Center. As we move through this today, we will end up with a request or a recommendation from the administration to move forward. As you know, from the last presentation, these are the facts regarding the building itself and the grant. It started as a $1.7 million grant opportunity zone, at which point in time the community membership was able to, in a very short period of time, to raise over $438,000 for a $2.138 million project. The college entered into an MOU at that time, and from that point on, we've continued to work together on a regular basis, if not every two weeks, almost monthly, with college administration and faculty and staff to determine the programs and how we could move forward with this project. This is a graph or a representation of the layout and the programs that could be represented in that, in the Workforce Development Center. I'd like to point out that with your vote today for the BA, the Bachelor's Degree, that all those associate and applied science degrees could also be generated in this site and move forward into the Bachelor's Degree. We did a study with Financial Resources and then also the Facilities Programming Group out of San Antonio, and identified over 40,000 people within the area within a 30-minute drive time who could be available between the ages of 18 to 64 to attend this site and to take programs or coursework at this location. However, using that very small population number of less than 2%, we estimate at least 800 students would be available to go there. This is the same budget as we showed last time, and I'd like to also point out that when you get down through the revenue points, that we're looking at over $622,000 that could be generated with only tuition and fees and state reimbursement. And the state calculations are based upon the estimates coming out of House Bill 8 and the types of certificates and degrees that would be offered at this location. As you move forward out to year five, we're looking at over $700,000 in revenue with expenses and personnel going across the bottom line there. As we continue with the expenses, and these expenses were identified specifically to this site based on our other sites and actual values, or even specific bids that we requested from the insurance and other items such as that, as it related to this square footage and this location. We project at least over, net income of over $247,000 within the first year and out to $261,000, assuming we're only going to gain the 200 students. And so this is a very conservative estimate all the way around, with expenses basically holding the same as we project an increase in enrollment. This estimate is looking at how we could look at if we took off $100,000 in revenue just off the top, because let's say we do not know exactly what configuration the students would enroll and at what time period. However, we wanted to make sure that we would be very conservative in showing a positive cash flow. As you can see across the revenue track, we're still in the black as we move across and maintaining relatively the same expenses. We would net over $147,000 in the first year and approximately $161,000 in the fifth Now where we are today, the Aransas County Commissioners Court voted approximately two months ago to ask Delmar College to accept this site, along with it all the revenue, the finances that they have on hand, and to move forward. If this works out, we would also move, work with the U.S. Department of Commerce and the EDA, the Economic Development Administration, to assume the grant. We have had meetings with both parties, and both parties verbally agree, and both parties have asked us to take it. The EDA administration representatives actually are very enthusiastic in asking Delmar College to accept this. The completion date of the grant is 2026, and there's a possible one-year extension. That is coming verbally, the one-year extension is in the documents, but also from the EDA This is a summary, again, of the site itself, of over 16,000 square feet, is usable- This is a summary, again, of the site itself, of over 16,000 square feet, is usable building that needs to be remodeled, essentially with sheet rock and internal type finishings. Right now, the county estimates that it has over $50,000 of funds available in its, on deposit, and additional $700,000 remain with the grant itself to draw down. As we look forward, we believe that we can be able to complete the building with this. However, there is very strong representation within the community to additionally go out and do additional fundraising. They were very successful in raising over $431,000 at the beginning of this grant. We have representations today, representatives today here from the Aransas County Partnership of Economic Development Corporation, who've led that and who have, who are very strong supporters of this and are dedicated to raising any additional funds that we might need for the completion, and really to bring it to the level at which we would want it to be more of a preferred level. And so I think I'd like for the representatives of Aransas County to stand, if you don't mind. They've been patiently waiting and came last time, too. I think you all know them.
Thank you for being here. Thank you.
Now, as far as next steps, today, we're coming to ask for more discussion and thorough review and possible vote on this option. The next steps would be the Delmar College and our Office of General Counsel, that we would begin to work with the county itself to finalize documentation. We would need to go back to the EDA to finalize documentation with them, assuming that the county has their second vote and approves this. They're pending us, it goes back. And then we would continue to monitor, as we've been requested, results, enrollment, finances, budgets, and as we march, everything to go through. We are prepared to discuss closing statements and ideally more additional documentation that is in draft form for if you would like to consider this transaction.
All right. Thank you very much. We do have a proposed board action, but we are going to go into closed session in just a minute to discuss the legal... But there's some questions first? Yes, sir.
Yeah, I just have a question. What is the, I guess, the final result of the EDA grant? I mean, when they sign off on, is it termination? Is it having students there, or is it having the building renovated? Or what's, what's the...
Yes, sir. We would be assuming all the responsibilities that the county had taken, which means that we would accept the building. However, we would take on the obligation to finish the remodeling of it.
I understand.
And, and to provide the reprogramming.
Yeah, but, but, so the EDA grant says that in order for you to get final payment of the grant money, you have to have programs in place and operating.
Well, we would draw down the money before the program started, because it would be a construction fund. They'd go towards construction.
Yeah, but, but the way EDA grants work is if you don't do the final thing, they could come back and ask for the money back.
That's correct. And this document says that exactly, that we would be obligated to, in good faith, conduct this and to carry out.
Let's, I think we'll have an opportunity to ask legal counsel some of the specifics around the agreement in closed session.
So, so I'm just centered around the EDA grant. You said that it expires in 2026, but based on, you know, a timetable for completion of renovations, we're going to be well ahead of that.
Yes, sir. The, the timeframe in which we are allowed, which we are given to complete construction is in 2026. We would anticipate completing it sooner. The grant would continue basically for the useful life of the building, put it in simple terms.
Okay.
So if that's up to 20 years, then theoretically, as long as things are moving forward, we would basically be required to conduct training there and have programs and do the letter of, which we intended.
Okay, I'll wait.
All right. So the board will go into closed session under Texas Government Code 551.071, consultation with legal counsel, 551.072, real property deliberation, and 551.074, personnel matters. And the time is 3:56 PM. Ladies and gentlemen, we have come back from closed session at 4:52 PM. We are coming back to agenda item number seven, which is the discussion and possible action to, with the Aransas County proposal for the EDA grant. Staff had prepared at the end of their presentation a proposed board action that is very specific. So I want to make sure that we understand the motion in front of us, that the Board of Regents authorize college administration and OGC to proceed with Office of General Counsel, to proceed with all steps necessary to finalize the agreement with Aransas County, including the preparation and execution of mutually agreeable documentation covering, A, the transfer of ownership of the property and improvements known as the Workforce Development Center and any remaining funds to the college, and B, the transfer and assignment of the U.S. Department of Commerce Economic Development Administration grant to the college, and C, any other agreements deemed necessary by the parties to support that agreement. And administration would be authorized to enter into final agreements with the EDA necessary for the transfer of the grant and related funds.
So moved.
Thank you, Mr. Cruel. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Mr. Loeb. Is there any discussion from, or other questions from the board around this item? Is there any public comment around this item? Would you like to make a public comment? You've sat here through two meetings with us. Would you like to make a public comment? Seeing none, all those in favor of the motion as presented, please raise your hand. Any opposed, same sign. That motion carries unanimously. I want to thank our friends in Aransas County. We, the partnership is, and the work to date has been phenomenal. And I know that we all credit the relationship between county leadership and Delmar College, as personified in Lenora Keys, for the work to get us to this point. So, so thank you all very much for your persistence, and we look forward to the continuing partnership. Looking, let's see, the board has no further action items today. We do have a calendar in front of us. There's a number of us going to our annual conference in Las Vegas. Then there is the scholarship dinner. I do not think I am going to be available for the scholarship dinner. And so Dr. Adami or Mr. Garza, representing the executive committee, would one of you work with Matthew and figure it out to make greetings on behalf of the, the Board of Regents? And then our regularly scheduled November meeting on November 14th. We will have a workshop in the morning. We'll determine the exact timeframe, whether that's a 10:00 or 10:30 start, but we'll do a workshop in the morning related to strategic planning. And then our December board meeting is on December 5th, and winter break begins for the college on December 20th. Is there any other information or action to come before the board? Seeing none, our board meeting is adjourned at 4:55 PM.